Good evening, everyone. It's the first day of October 2019 at 6:30 PM. And as we begin all of our city council meetings, we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Will you please rise and join us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask our city clerk to do roll call.
Harrington.
Here.
McKinney.
Here.
O'Doherty.
Here.
Pierce.
Here.
Schuster.
Here.
Stalder.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Gabriel, absent. Shumway.
Here.
That's eight present and one absent, Your Honor.
Okay, we have a quorum. We begin our city council meetings now with the public comments on non-agenda items. Remember, this is for non-agenda items. Excuse me. We have a timer, and it's set for three minutes. So, anyone that would like to make public comments, you have three minutes. And if you'd come up, identify who you are, and then we'll start the timer after you identify yourself. So, anyone in the audience who would like to come up and make public comments, please come forward. Mr. Homer, welcome.
Thank you all for serving our community. I just want to...
Mark, would you give us your name?
Yeah, Mark Homer. You need more information, or...
No, that's all.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to address the issue of going back to July when there was the development on Third Street. And it came through the Planning Commission, which I serve on. But there was the issue of giving some leniency to a developer so they would co-pay, the city would co-pay for a traffic light. Maybe you can tell me how much the city agreed to pay on that. It was the coffee development.
Right.
So, my feeling is that it was a very rushed decision, highly irresponsible. The city should not be giving away that kind of money to a corporation, a development corporation. I understand that there was a proposal that when the company became more solvent, they could pay it back, but that was not something that was considered. Instead, it was just a flat-out giveaway of what looks like a couple hundred thousand dollars. And for our city to do that to our taxpayers in the name of economic development, there are better ways to improve economic development. I could see if they were building affordable housing or something like this, which might serve low-income and poor people. It might be justifiable. In any case, I just cannot agree with giving away that kind of money to a developer. So, that's my statement. And I hope that in the future, everybody will consider these issues much more carefully, because that's a big chunk of change for the taxpayer to give over, for someone to line their own pockets. Because a business that develops those kind of properties is going to make money, so we don't need to give them an extra bonus. So, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, I'm Brian Worthing from Visionary Broadband. I'm one of the owners. We're excited to be a part of the community and to be talking about bringing fiber into Laramie. We'll be the third fiber provider in the community. And as anyone knows, competition encourages lower prices and better service. So, like I said, I just want to be here to say thank you for having us, that thank you for showing us the friendliness that your staff has. We sat down with your staff multiple times this year and listened to their needs and determined what would be the best service for them. And I love being here. You know, I lived out on 15th Street when I was going to school. I consulted for Ideal Foods as part of my graduation project for the College of Business, and I'm excited to be back. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you for you and Stacy Dean here. Brian, everyone that comes forward, be sure to sign, just so we have a record that you are minutes. Anyone else that has anything to say on non-agenda items in this public comment period? Seeing no others, we'll close this public hearing, and now we'll go to the consideration of changes in the agenda. Tonight, our acting, and I'll get back to you and just say, our acting vice mayor is Brian Schuster, and our city clerk, do you have something? Okay, I just wanted to mention that Brian Schuster is acting vice mayor, so...
He's always acting.
Counselor Schuster.
Thank you. I move that the agenda be set as submitted.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded by Counselor Weaver. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Being opposed. The agenda then is set. The next item we have is the, do we have any, we don't have any proclamations, but we do have a public hearing. If the city clerk could read the notice of the public hearing.
Notice is hereby given that the city council will hold, will meet at 6:30 PM on October 1st, 2019, in the city council chambers, Laramie City Hall, 406 Iverson Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming, to take public comments on the following. Original ordinance number 2004 vacating the entirety of the undeveloped right-of-way running north and south along blocks 119, lots 1 and 5, and block 120 of the West Laramie subdivision. All applications, plans, and specifications relative to these matters are available for review at the City of Laramie Planning Office at 405 Grand Avenue, Laramie, Wyoming. Anyone wishing to be heard should be present or may be represented by his or her agent at the meeting.
Thank you. Are there any in the public that would like to make any comments regarding this item of vacating this area and also the information that was given on this? This is in the West Laramie subdivision. Okay, seeing none, we'll close this public hearing and go to our staff. Do we have any announcements today, city manager?
No announcements, Mayor.
Okay. Now, are there any disclosures by anyone in the city council on any items that they have conflicts of interest with? Seeing none, we'll go back to the acting vice mayor, Counselor Schuster.
Thank you very much. I move that the consent agenda be approved and that each specific action on the consent agenda be approved as indicated.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Counselor Pierce. Roll call.
Harrington.
Yes.
McKinney.
Yes.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Gabriel, absent. Shumway.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Okay. The items on the consent agenda have been approved, and we'll now move to the regular agenda. The first item on the regular agenda is item number 11, and that is Counselor Schuster.
Thank you. I move to approve, recommend that the city council approve the vacation of approximately .195 acres, area of right-of-way between lot 1 and block 5, and block 119 and block 120 of the West Laramie subdivision based on findings of facts and conclusions of law and subject to the staff's recommended conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Counselor Doherty. Matt, take us through this.
Thank you. Mayor, council, how's it going? Yes, so this is a vacation of Taylor Street and the West Laramie subdivision over by Plenty, the new Game and Fish building. This is a section of Taylor Street that has never been planned to be developed. It is just a right-of-way that has always been a field, basically. And so, at this point, the three lots that are adjoining it want to subdivide it equally between them. And so, block 120 on the east side will take the full right side if the right-of-way is split right down the middle. And then, block 119, 5A, and 1A will take each portion of the south and north portion of that right-of-way that is left over. Currently, there is overhead power lines, water, and sewer going down this right-of-way. There will be easements placed in for each of those utilities. The zoning around the area, the zoning of this possibly vacated area is B2. To the north is B2 and C2, Mobile Home Park, as well as a wood manufacturer where Centennial Woods is. Then, to the south is C2, it's a manufacturer. East is B2, LCBA property and Old Game and Fish. And then, to the west is B2 and R3, where Wyoming Analytical Labs is and Residential. And so, at this point, I will happily take any questions. There has been, sorry, there has been no public comments around this. Only one person has called regarding just questions about what a vacation kind of meant more than anything. But yeah, happy to take any questions.
This is our second reading. Is there any questions that we have for Matt, Counselor Pierce?
So, in the past, when we vacate, sometimes there's a charge.
Right.
So, it appears we have a few fees in here, but it seems to me we're waiving other charges. Is there a reason for this? And our charges have never been huge. I mean, they're just...
Correct. Right. And so, I mean, all, the only fees we have are the actual application fees. I can't remember exactly when we started not having fees. I know Derek has the answer to that of what the date was. But yeah.
Mr. Kenny.
Mayor and council, in 2016, we modified the code. Prior to 2016, all vacations required an appraisal, and all the land was appraised at fair market value. And then, it was up to the council to decide how much to charge the people or persons making the request to vacate the street for the land during discussion for properties that are rights of way that are unused, so they're just paper, like in this case. We changed code that we would not require valuation and that a zero dollar would be assigned to that, and that someone would be allowed to vacate it without having to pay for that land, so...
I remember some of that conversation, but thanks for the reminder.
Is that everything? Counselor Doherty?
I was wondering why the, it seems like it landlocks that southwest lot. Does it, that's the vacant lot? If that is vacated, what's the access for that lot?
Right. And sorry, I should have stated that along with my presentation. But along with this vacation, there is a lot-line adjustment application that's going in. Basically, what will happen is that where you see the west side of this vacation being split down the middle, that northern portion will be adjusted to basically be a driveway for that southwest lot. And so, it'll almost be a, I'm trying to come up with a shape name, but just a long stem to Harrison Street to that southwest portion. If that makes sense.
All right, thank you.
Cool.
Any other questions? Any questions from the public? Any comments or questions from the council before we vote? Can we have a roll call?
McKinney.
Yes.
Pierce.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
O'Doherty.
Yes.
Schuster.
Yes.
Gabriel, absent. Shumway.
Yes.
That's eight yeses, zero nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
All right. So, this item moves on to third reading. The third reading will be on the consent agenda on our next city council meeting. Matt, did you have something else?
Mayor, council, because we have quitclaim deeds to go along with this for the easement, as well as each property that is gaining land from this vacation, we will need to put it on the regular agenda.
Good enough.
Cool.
Thanks for that clarification. We'll do that then. Okay, the next item is again Counselor Schuster, item number 12.
Okay. I move to approve original ordinance number 2002 on third and final reading, annexing approximately six acres of property located in unincorporated Albany County, located at 4503 Bobolink Lane, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second by Counselor Weaver. Matt?
Mayor, council, due to the complicated aspect of this project, I'm going to have our city attorney come and explain some situations that could happen.
I was trying to second. No, I'm just kidding. You don't want to hear Bob.
Just giving the city attorney at that time, Your Honor. I apologize, it's super out of order.
I apologize in advance. I just want to speak to the procedural aspects, not just of this motion, but how it relates to the next. Keep in mind that what's before you in this package of four motions, or this is the posture of those four motions, they would, if approved, annex property, bring it into the city, zone it R2, and approve an amended preliminary plat of twin homes. And that's if everything is approved. All right. But let's look at three likely scenarios so you can see the interrelation of these four things. Let's take a scenario of no annexation. That's the motion before you now. That would kill this project. It would stop it in its tracks. And that's perhaps obvious, but if the vote of council on this motion is not to annex, the other three motions must be denied. And I will repeat the obvious, which is the comprehensive plan motion would have to be denied. We can't alter our comprehensive plan for land that's in the county. Work with the county to change comprehensive plans, but that's not before us. Clearly, we can't, third one, we can't zone property that's not in the city. So, that would have to be denied without discussion. And then, the preliminary plat for the same reason, we don't approve plats that are not in the city. So, that, if council chooses to kill this project here, or if they choose to vote no on annexation, that's that. You have no more power on the next three motions. Next, I suppose it could be voting yes on all of these. Annexation is approved. The comprehensive plan is approved. Then, the current zoning, as you amended it to R2, is approved. And then, you come to the amended preliminary plat. Now, the amended preliminary plat, right now, has the conditions you see in one of the motions before you, that you looked at in your packet, that has conditions on it that were imposed a couple of months ago, and then some additional conditions that are suggested. As with any preliminary plat, you could sit down, talk about those conditions, think about other conditions, work with those conditions, and approve it with those conditions. If you get to a denial of the preliminary plat on the fourth motion, what I'm going to suggest, and I will remind you at the time, is rather than denying it, you postpone that, because that would give me and staff time to put in writing the reasons for the denial, so it's just not a matter of discussion. And we'd bring it back for you at the next meeting. Next, if the issue for you, and this is where it gets more complicated, is the zoning, this all does get more complicated. In other words, it sits at R2, you had amended it from R3 down to R2. If, for instance, you were interested in looking at another zoning designation like R1, then you need to postpone annexation. And the reason for that is, the reason for that is in motions two and three. The planning commission took a look at the comprehensive plan, and I don't have the exact designation, but they did a sort of urban multifamily zone, and I know the planners know the exact name. That allows R2, R3 zoning, which you've already thought about. It does not allow an R1 zoning. So, that means your third motion zoning cannot be changed to R1 without further action by the planning commission. So, you need to postpone annexation because you would need to remand comprehensive plan and zoning back to the planning commission. Because you can't annex and then remand because you can't annex property without having a zoning designation. You can't bring property, we can't have the property in the city that doesn't have zoning. And if you want a different zoning than R2, you need to send it back to the planning commission, so annexation is not denied, annexation is not approved, annexation is postponed for further consideration down below of the comprehensive plan and a zoning change. And then, that would also require a remand of the preliminary plat back to the zoning commission, because right now, the amended preliminary plat, it would be, it needs to be filtered through the planning commission with whatever new zoning recommendation that they would bring back to you. Questions?
Let me start. Since we're going to deal with annexation prior to we deal with zoning, how do we postpone something that we've already adopted?
And I'm sorry...
Annexation would be the first item that we discuss. Ordering seems to be complicated, because you said if we don't pass R2, then it's remanded back to the planning and zoning. I don't know how, if we've passed annexation, that we postpone something that we've already adopted.
Well, that's, that's why I'm saying that if you, if the council thinks it's going to revisit the zoning and think, want to have R1 looked at, you need to postpone annexation. That answer your question? You postpone it, because it's going back to the planning commission to come back to you. And you've made no decision about annexation.
Right. The question I have, and maybe this can be cleared up, is we don't know how that vote's going to go until we vote, but we will know what the vote on annexation is as soon as we've completed item number 12.
You are exactly right, and that puts you in a difficult position.
Okay. Let's go to the, you had a question, Counselor Weaver?
I did, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate your lead-in question to that, because I think it's going to be very closely related. Mr. Mayor, if I understand the city attorney right, as he walked us through the procedural mechanics of this, if we don't approve zoning associated with the annexation that we may or may not approve, and the amendment to the comp plan that we may or may not approve, there's no point in annexing. We don't want to annex a piece of property into the City of Laramie that isn't accompanied by zoning. That's what we're trying to avoid.
Exactly. You cannot do that.
So, Mr. Mayor, back to your question, the zoning aspect of that will have to be, the way I'm understanding this, it's possible that we, the city council may vote to approve the zoning that's before us now in conjunction with the comp plan change and the annexation, and potentially postpone a preliminary plat. And that plat may change, may or may not change as we go forward, and there may be a zoning change associated with that that would have to be remanded back to the planning commission.
No.
Not because, I'm not quite finished. I don't want to be unclear here. Later, with a plat that has possibly been worked over through the developer and the staff and some others, may have a different zone that might be more appropriate for the plat at the time or even desired, at which point the city has the option of remanding that back to the planning commission to consider yet another zoning change that would then come back before the council.
Mr. Southern...
Mr. Mayor, is that correct? I wonder.
Well, let's get an answer from the city attorney.
One second. I'm trying to understand the question, Counselor Weaver. I'm not...
Let me try to rephrase it. The plat might be postponed. The plat may be reworked. It may be a very different plat than what we postponed. The developer and others may believe that a different zoning works better with the new plat. Now, we may have approved a zoning change, but it doesn't preclude the city from changing the zoning again. Does it, Mr. Mayor? To go through you, just going through you.
I think not. I mean, your zoning designations, people can always come back to you and ask you to change them.
So, Mr. Mayor, my point in that is, I understand procedurally, there's this path that we have to take to be correct, and it does include an approval of a zoning. But I don't think we are then, the city, locked in permanently to that zoning change just because we have made it to be procedurally correct on the matter tonight.
Well, I see. There's always that option for change. Counselor Pierce, or go ahead.
I want to be careful there. If we bring property into the city, zone it a certain way, and then we have a resident, right, relying on that zoning to go ahead with their plans, I think it is difficult at that point to change it to some other zoning, out from under, out from under.
Okay, Counselor Pierce.
So, basically, the safe bet would be, or the safe vote would be, if we are interested in an R1, we vote to postpone annexation. That's the simplest and the cleanest.
That's the only path, counselor, because you can't annex this and then change zoning to R1. To get to R1, it has to go back through the planning commission.
Right.
And the twin of that is you can't access, annex this and not have zoning. So, you need to postpone annexation, send it back through the planning commission if you want to get to an R1. And I don't know what any, I'm talking like I know what you all want to do, and I don't mean to say that, so...
Counselor Pierce.
So, basically, those who choose to vote to postpone are basically saying, without actually saying, you know, if we vote to postpone, we are saying we would like this to be R1. Right?
Well, I can't guess what you, the reasons why you might want to postpone, but you should talk about it.
So, in our deliberation, be sure that you, if you're bringing a motion to postpone, that you give reasons for the motion to postpone. It's what our city attorneys have to do. Anyone else that has any questions for us? City attorney, again, we're dealing on annexation and the complications of any other changes in the next three items that would affect this project. Counselor Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Merson. I don't see anybody else. I'll speak for the second time. I think the points raised by the counselor previous were exactly what I wanted to try to head off at the pass. I don't think we're necessarily, as a council, yes, I understand we have to be careful for various reasons, and it's all hypothetical. I'm not certain that there will be any requested changes, or future designs may necessitate that. But it's not written in stone. There is very much a process to examine if there are changes requested, and they may be requested after a redesign takes place. I don't know. I'm speculating. It's all hypothetical. But there is an avenue for that to happen. We are not intentionally setting ourselves up because we think that's what's going to happen, but there is an avenue for those changes to take place. So, I disagree strongly with the characterization of a safe bet on any type of vote. I think it's all hypothetical. I think postponement for annexation, I've been on the council before... I think postponement for annexation, I've been on the council before, Mr. Mayor, when people requested to be de-annexed because of various, um, changes that came up. So I think, um, safe bet doesn't really seem to be available to us. I think flexibility is probably the best choice if we want to try to keep a lot of doors open, both for ourselves and potentially the developer, who I don't know if he's here tonight.
Yes, he is.
They are here, all right. So that, that's, that's the way I'd like to have my comments interpreted, because I'm not sure we have that solid option that's going to, to meet all of our concerns and our needs that we, that we might like. So it was hypothetical. I didn't mean to communicate that we should do it this way because we have some fail-safe, just that that avenue is available. For clarification.
Okay.
The rest of this all makes sense to me. These things have to happen, Mr. Mayor, in a certain order, and I understand that. I understand why we need to do that, even if it does include a specific zoning at this time. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Before we go to the public, is it prudent or possible for us to reorder, treat zoning before we treat an annexation? We can't do that, can we? We can't give a.
I'm going to defer to the, how we reorder items. Let me, if you don't mind, because this is complicated, I'm going to confer with the, with the planners for a moment.
Okay.
But you, you can talk about, if you want, how to reorder agenda items.
Okay. Go ahead and have that discussion, and, and keep your other ear open because Counselor Harrington is going to ask.
Is it possible to make a motion that is subject to the approval of the current zoning? Like the annex, is it, I guess maybe that will be when he has both ears available again, but curious if our annexation decision can be contingent on the following vote.
Interesting.
Just as the only way.
I've never heard of it.
Yeah, we'll get a, we'll get an answer to that.
Just trying to think of a way to make a decision after.
All right. Interesting thought. We'll see.
Mr. Mayor, if, if it comes back that that is an option to reorder, we would need a motion to reorder the agenda for today and move the item to wherever you'd like it on the agenda. And then it does require a two-thirds vote.
Okay. Counselor Schuster.
We have an item on the table. Would we have to pull it off the table to reorder? Or, I've never, I've never seen this done before, mid-meeting, mid-item, so I'm, I'm really, really confused right now.
I believe that you would be correct, Counselor Schuster, that you would have to deal with the motion that's on the table right now to make the motion.
And then make a motion for reordering. Did you catch all that conversation?
No.
No.
There was a, there was a thought from Counselor Harrington that we, we might make contingent the passing of the annexation on keeping the zoning at R2. And I don't know if that's even a possibility. And then we also talked about reordering, so we deal with zoning before we can deal with the annexation. I don't know if we could do that, because if it's not annexed, we can't zone it, and it's, it's a complicated scenario.
What did?
Just hang, just give me a, that's how it was complicated.
So what we talked about is, right now, they have a motion on the floor, so they'd have to withdraw the motion that's currently on the floor to reorder the agenda.
We would, right.
And so they would make a motion and a second, and have to have a two-thirds vote to reorder, and then do, as Counselor Harrington had suggested with the contingency, pending what you guys discussed.
Depending, what we thought is, they do want to, we'll have to two and three. Discuss item two, and then table. Discuss item three.
I won't be supporting that.
And then.
Can't go away.
Yeah. So, table works for me.
So what do you want?
Yeah, they have to deal.
City Attorney, do you want to take a five-minute break so we do this right?
I think we're holding, well.
You okay? Am I okay?
I, I don't know about okay, may overstate it. I think what we could do is, and, and please, the clerk will chime in, is with the, with the motion on the floor right now, the motion to withdraw that, right? And then it's withdrawn, and then to put it later, what do they have to do?
They can either make a motion to move it in the agenda or to table it, as you said, so they can bring it back.
So you probably, they could probably move to table right now, couldn't they?
Yeah.
Move to table it until later in the agenda.
In the agenda, okay.
Then you would go to items number two, you could discuss it, right? Table it. Go to item number three. Discuss it. Table it. And then move to bring those back off the table in the order you wish.
So we do it in the proper order.
Right.
Okay.
That way you will know, and I think what we're driving toward, is you will know the sense of council.
Sure.
As you discuss items two and three, and then you can come back to annexation, knowing what you know about your fellow councilors.
Okay. Counselor Harrington.
Will there be public comment for each section as we go through before we table?
I think there needs to be.
I agree.
Counselor Weaver.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure if we, and maybe I missed it, there was a lot to listen to. If we got an answer to the question whether or not we could make an annexation motion contingent on zoning, we can't. I'm seeing, okay, all right. So that's a no. So if we were to try to reorder this, so speaking to that, since I think that's, well, it's not the motion yet, but it might be the motion, um, I'm not comfortable with that. We're going to go and talk about zoning before we talk about annexation. That's out of order. I mean, it just, it doesn't make sense, and I think we just heard a series of instructions about why we do these things in a certain order.
Sorry, I missed that.
Thank you, Siri. So, I'm not sure that all that procedural trouble is worthwhile, because I think it doesn't really make sense. I think what we're doing is dancing around the main question, which is whether or not we're going to bring this piece of land into the city with the requested zoning and a design, I mean, don't let me forget a change to the comp plan, and, and a design, and then postpone the last piece of that, and talk about it, and have our staff work with folks, or whether we're just going to say no.
Well, that's why we're here.
And if I may, Mayor, I just want to be absolutely clear, that if the vote is first taken to annex and the vote is yes, that property needs to be zoned and zoned tonight, and the only possibilities for you tonight are R2 and R3.
Okay.
As long as we're clear.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Other questions before we go to the public? All right. Are there those in the public that would like to come forward and talk about what we have on the floor, which is annexation? And would each of you that come forward give us your name and then sign, sign for the record? Welcome, and thank you for speaking tonight.
Clint Sedick, owner, property. I hear the discussions and whatnot. I just want to make sure that, you know, we, we don't need to dance around the issue. I'm not interested in R1. There's no, I mean, I'd, I'll walk away, so if there's any reason for that, I can't do R1. The costs to, to develop out there are, are already tight enough, it is, that R2 is the only thing that I could, I could do with. Any questions?
Thank you. Yes, you can ask questions to the developer.
So if the, if the, so you would prefer to not be annexed than.
Correct.
R2, okay.
Any other questions for the developer, the owner? Thank you. Anyone else in the public would like to come forward?
Mayor, councilors, my name is Richard Warrin. Live at 4512 Bobolink Lane. Moved there 19 years ago today. Nothing was out there. I moved from 1112 Bradley, a block away from campus. Had to deal with single-family homes with eight to 10 occupants. Cars piled up all over, cars parked in my driveway. Looks like I'm back to the same scenario. Last council meeting, several of you pointed to you'd like a compromise. Have you looked at the plat, the current plat that we developed? Do you see a compromise there? I see it as being worse. As I predicted, they were going to dump more traffic onto Bobolink. I know I'm just an average country kid, but I'm smart enough to figure out the ploys these guys use. The covenants clearly state on this property that nothing can be put on less than two acres. We have given Sean, the neighbors and I, have given Sean our financial and our moral pledge to fight this based on those covenants. We all moved into that area, understanding that it would remain like it is, not be changed by a developer or the city council. How about the vet Sean? I call it the DIA effect. You build an airport half the way to Kansas, you have people build around it, and now they bitch because there's planes flying overhead. Sean's going to have the same problem. He's had a vet clinic there, Doug Honken built it, how many years ago? And when people get built up around it, they're going to hear cows and the dogs and everything else, and guess what? They're going to call the city police, and they're going to knock on Sean's door and tell him to knock it off. Not only nationally, but I feel locally, if this passes, we've lost our moral compass. If you're going to do something like that to a local businessman and local residents who are here to speak, and I think we pretty clearly have spoken already about how we're And I just want to reiterate that it, when we moved out there, I knew what my covenants were on my property. I went and found out if there were any other covenants around me. So I was assuming that there was going to be one more house built across the street from me. I guess that's where assumptions get you, huh? And you can't tell me that there isn't going to be a traffic problem. Go down beach right now. Go down 17th Street during the day. South 17th where the UW bus stop is. Tell me what kind of traffic is there. I've dealt with this before. I moved out of there, out of Bradley, to get someplace where I didn't have to deal with this, pardon the French, crap all the time. And guess what? Looks like the developer is going to come and say, well, we can do whatever we want. I have spoken to an attorney on a different matter, and I gave him these covenants, and he said it doesn't matter what the city proposes to do, these covenants are a contract between the landowners in that contract, and that's it. And like I say, we're willing to back Sean financially and morally, because this is absolutely wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to come forward and speak to the topic? Welcome.
Welcome, Mayor, City Council, Linda Dunlap, 4519 Mockingbird. According to this new plat that CJ submitted, it looks like there's going to be 23 twin homes, which means there's going to be a total of 46. I don't know if anybody has had that surveyed out there to find out exactly how much land is out there. You all keep saying approximately six acres. Well, we know there's not six acres, but it hasn't been surveyed. You're going to put 46 homes in there? I've also been told that there's one sewer line running down Vista. All of the houses to the west of us, Walmart, the new bone and joint, their surgery center, and supposedly all of these new houses are all going to be dumped into the middle of Vista, which is going to be dumped in there. If that sewer line breaks, it's going to do a whole lot more damage than one septic tank to that aqua fire. That's all that's allowed out there right now, so I'm hoping you vote no against this. We can only put one house out there. You put one house, you put one well, you put one septic tank, it's over, it's done. It's still in the county, everybody's happy. You put this many houses in, how many people are going to die because of this being close? Have you looked how close these houses are? There's not going to be any parking, there's not going to be any room for children to play. Are any of you willing to move into one of these? I don't see any yeses. I don't, guess you answered questions, but are any, I mean, it's, it's just not plausible. We moved out there for this reason, we like it out there. We really don't want to be in the city. No offense, we don't want you to give our money, we give enough to the county. I mean, are all these lives, if a fire strikes, this is going to wipe out that whole district. He doesn't want to be, if he can't have what he wants as far as money, he doesn't want it, so let's just not do it. That solves a whole lot of problems here tonight by saying no. It'd be over and it'd be done with. Thanks.
Mr. Burkett. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Bob Buckart, and I live next door on 4511 Mockingbird Lane. And when I see this much dense population being put into a very small area, it makes me wonder, how much problem would it be for fire protection for that many buildings that close together? As well as the water pressure, if there was a major fire, what would we do with the water pressure in that area? Would it shut down everything in six-block area to put out a fire? And if that many buildings are that close together, what would stop a wildfire from running through all of them and putting a lot of people at risk? And it's fairly narrow access to get enough fire equipment in there, and there's no room in between the buildings. So it makes me wonder how the health and safety is going to be protected in a situation like that? As well as the traffic congestion, if you're trying to evacuate the area because of a major incident of some sort? It seems like a very, kind of, poor way of treating those people that get stuck in that small area and that congested ability to even escape what might be a problem there. In addition to that, I would like to offer a short apology for my behavior the last time I spoke to this group and spoke amongst this group, because I have some medical issues, and I didn't have my medicine onboard that day, and so I was affected by that as well as the emotional situation that came up, and I very much like to apologize for my outburst from the last time. So, thank you, and I hope your consideration of possibly choosing not to annex at all would be something in the back of your mind.
Thank you, Bob. Anyone else in the public that can make comments?
I'm Wanda McGuire Garcia, 4531 Mockingbird Lane. When I looked at that plat today.
When I looked at that plat today, I wondered if those, if any of those on the east side were closer than the hundred feet from the aquifer that was in there. And I was looking at the, the size of the lots have decreased since the last time we were in here. Most, a lot, I got a, I got a twin house not too far from me. There's eight cars for two units. Where are people gonna put the cars? And all those people that are, the new, the new ones that are going in west of there are multiple, multiple, multiple buildings. So you get all those people there, it, the, the, traffic has increased so much since the high school is there, and you get all these other people coming in there, it's just gonna be overburdened. And if you put all those people going out on Bobalink Road, what are you gonna do if you have a true emergency? I just, I don't, I think the quality of life is gonna be going down so much for us that never thought we'd ever have to face anything like this. So I really hope you'll really consider what you're voting. And that if, if it's got a covenant on there, it says every, one house, every two acres, that's a legal contract, I don't know how you can break it. It doesn't seem right to me that you can do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Mayor, City Council, Sarah Ruland, forty-five twenty-four Bobalink Lane. I have to agree with pretty much all of my neighbors. Originally, with the original plat, they didn't have probably near as much of the traffic issues. On Fairview Lane, he now wants to open it up, so now you've got access all the way to Fairview where originally it was all for emergency access only. And now they've got this packed in even tighter than before. So it's a major concern. And the traffic is going to be nightmarish, especially with the high school there. It's already, the impact since they put the high school in three years ago is huge. Every morning and every evening, you see people going down this dirt road at fifty miles an hour. And it's got potholes that size. You can lose a Volkswagen in some of those potholes. And who's, I know the city, it would be a city road and maintaining it, but then you turn right into dirt. It's incredibly hard to maintain asphalt into dirt like that. Some, and with the traffic coming down from Grand Street down on Bobalink because, oh, it turns into a paved road, they do that now on dirt just to get to the high school faster. Saves them three minutes. But people do it. So. I just don't think it's something we need over there right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Come, come forward, I think you were gonna make a comment. Yeah.
My name is Jake Harris. I am in real estate, I have been in real estate since nineteen seventy-nine. I was the owner broker for Century Twenty-One Associated Brokers for about thirty-two years. I've seen the ups and downs in the Laramie marketplace. I can sympathize with the personal trials and tribulations, but I'm gonna throw out something just a little bit different than that. And that is, in the late eighties, mid-to-late eighties, contractors ran out of ground to build on. When they finally came back in the early to mid nineties, those lots were substantially higher, anywhere between fifteen to twenty percent. Consequently, the price of housing on a whim went up twenty percent. Okay? All of us, all of us can remember how tough it was to get into your first house in Laramie, Wyoming. I'm not kidding. Affordable housing in Laramie is tough. We are only second to Jackson. Okay? Once you get into that first house, then you can ride on the, on the escalation that comes with appreciation. We need, we need to keep the availability of building lots in the city of Laramie moving upwards and outwards to accommodate, to accommodate natural growth. According to the Laramie MLS stats, our total sales are down about nineteen percent from last year. Our median, median price home in Laramie is two-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand compared to two-hundred-and-thirty thousand last year. Our average price in Laramie is two-hundred-and-fifty-nine thousand eight-hundred-and-seventy, up from two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand last year.
Mr. Harris.
Sir.
Please wrap it up, your three minutes
Okay.
is up.
The last factor is that we need to consider, we need to consider replacing, replacing the, the tax rolls from all the properties that are being taken off of the tax rolls north of the university. We need to consider that.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
I'm done, I guess.
Let's, let's do it with the public.
You can always extend the public comments, Ron. If we wanted to.
Mr. Harris, did you cover everything you wanted to cover?
For the most part, yeah.
Okay, we don't wanna, public comment is, is different than, than talking about the issue, so.
Okay. No.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Anyone else in the public that would like to talk about this annexation item before us? Mr. Burkett?
Just as, out of curiosity, how affordable are these new units gonna be? Are they gonna be in the median, in the higher end, are they gonna be low-cost? It'd be just interesting to know how much these new units are gonna actually sell for.
The market will be, okay, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you for all your comments, we're gonna come back now to the city council, any comments or anything else before we go to the vote, or whatever other motions there will be on this annexation? Counselor Weaver.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I do have a question for the city staff, and I'm gonna defer to Counselor Stalder because she hasn't spoken on the issue yet.
Okay, let's go, let's go with Counselor Stalder first.
I guess this is a question for the city attorney. Do the covenants run with the land, or does that become sort of null after annexation?
Let me give you a longer answer, Mayor, Council. I've not, I've seen the covenants, I mean, you, you and I looked at them, I've not read them or studied them, but that's irrelevant to the city's decision. And what I mean is this. No matter what the city does, private contractual relationships between people exist. By annexing or zoning in a certain way, those covenants are between individuals, and there's nothing that the city can do or should do or should even take into consideration. And to use like a different example, you know, down on Third Street, it's zoned for gas stations, right? Put in a gas station. We don't know, though, when, when they submit plans and it goes through the process, whether the person who sold them the property has a private agreement with them that you can build anything except a gas station. So, nothing, we get the site plans, we look at the site plans, we say, fine, you're meeting city ordinances, their problem is with the individual who sold them the property. And we have no, we don't make our decisions based on that, and we can't. And we can't affect them. Does that answer your question? And you could know, I mean, ask, ask it, I mean, I'm trying to be very blunt about this. I won't give a legal opinion about an agreement between two people, but nothing we do affects that agreement.
But just legally or procedurally, like if we annex the property, does that remove it from the subdivision, and so it's no longer, the covenants aren't applicable?
It does not affect any private agreement that they have, and a covenant is a private agreement. I've not studied it, I don't, you know, I don't represent them, I don't have, I don't have any doubts about what, what these folks say. I don't know if there's another side, you know, if there's a lawyer working on the other side who has some idea, but we don't, I don't know, and whatever we do does not affect the covenants.
Okay.
Is that everything?
Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, a question for our planning staff, Mr. Mayor, is what, if this can be answered here, would be allowed under county regulations to be built on that parcel right now? Or maybe, no, I'll stick with that. What's allowed under county regulations on that parcel right now? Mr. Mayor, if we can get a, if we can get an answer to that question?
Matt, if you could, I think, I think that's been discussed, but can you clarify what the county permits?
Um, Mayor, Council, I mean, simple answer, just so we don't put our own foot in our mouth, is that we aren't the county planners. There's a number of processes they can go through that we just don't really know exactly what those are. Currently, as it's zoned, they can do one-acre parcels, but it can possibly change. Yeah.
All right, Mr. Mayor, so it sounds like they probably have, and we're not the county, but a number of processes as well, different requests can be made and be considered by the county. Thank you.
Is that everything, okay? Counselor Harrington?
Is it your order to ask the applicant a question?
Yes, yes.
I'm curious if you could speak to the sort of price range of these twin homes, I think that may be applicable to our conversation, if you're comfortable speaking about that. Or at least your intention, I should say.
You're, you're wanting to know the price of the homes? Probably that two-hundred to two-fifty per, per side. So, and then if you, if you turn that into an R1, then it, it
Yeah.
makes the lots bigger, makes the houses bigger.
Yep.
Puts them into the half-million-dollar range.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Are we, council, ready to go to the vote on annexation? Seeing no further discussion, let's have a roll call on annexation.
Harrington.
Yes.
McKinney.
No.
O'Doherty.
No.
Pierce.
No.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Gabriel, absent. Shumway.
Yes.
That's five yeses, three nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Okay, so that item passes, Counselor Schuster, the next item?
Thank you, I move that the council approve the amendment of the city council's comprehensive plan, future land use map, changing the designation from estate to auto-urban multifamily according to the finding of facts and conclusions of law.
I need a second. Counsel, city clerk.
Counselor Schuster, if I could have you add to your motion and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign?
And authorize the mayor and clerk to sign, I'm sorry it's not on here, I was reading it verbatim.
Thank you.
Second by Counselor Harrington. Matt, if you'll introduce this to us?
Yes. Mayor, Council, to change this area from estate to auto-urban multifamily allows, allows for denser zoning. Estate is R1 and forget the other, sorry. Basically, auto-urban multifamily is R2, R3, and R2M. Currently, we are at R2 after last reading's amendment. Sorry. Currently, the subject property is zoned county residential as well as city aquifer protection overlay zone, and it is a single-family with one single-family house at the southwest corner that is on Septic and Well Water. To the north is B2 as well as aquifer protection overlay zone, it is undeveloped. To the east is county residential, undeveloped. To the south is county residential, single-family residential. And to the west is multi, or R3, multifamily residential, as well as the Turner Tract Overlay Zone and Grand View Heights PUD. And to the west, we are seeing twin homes as well as single-family in a much denser fashion than to the east. Generally, in the comprehensive plan as well as the housing study, it does call for a greater amount of housing as well as variety for different incomes, as well as family, and different just styles of living. To the east, we haven't seen that as much. Generally, that is burdened by the aquifer protection overlay zone, but as well as just the city's growing, and so this is a new concept. So, sorry about the many paperworks. Planning Commission on June twenty-fourth, two thousand nineteen recommended approval of the comprehensive plan amendment from estate to auto-urban multifamily with three yes, or four yes and three no, zero absent. We have had a lot of public comment around this application from the residents, as well as a number of geologists concerned about the effect of this kind of density over the aquifer protection overlay zone. A geologist by the name of Chris Moody has brought up the issue of fault zones rather than a fault line that continues off of a fault line, a buffer of anywhere from seventy-five to a hundred-and-fifty feet. And the fact that this could open new contamination pathways. The applicant has gone through a site-specific investigation that has been reviewed by our city geologists as well as a third party from Tri-Hydro, finding that this type of development would be okay in this land. And so at this point, the developer has gone through every condition or as contingency that the city requires of them. But at this point, I am here for any questions you might have.
Questions? Counselor O'Doherty?
I see houses within the hundred-foot buffer, so I don't understand.
Right. No, so, in the SSI, it was found that the northeast corner is within a no-development zone, basically, within like twenty feet of that northeast corner, and so at that point, with the new plat, that is part of a backyard, basically, or essentially. With the zones, that was not, and I might ask Derek to come up and help clarify this, but the zones are not identified by the city at this point. We, we find the fault lines are a vulnerable feature, but we do not identify specifically within the Kappa Plan that zones are. And so this has been a point of contention because fault zones were found in a different SSI, but they have not been consistent with every SSI in the city. If. Do I need any correction on that? Okay. Okay.
Okay. Does that answer your concern?
That's not the way I read it. I, the peer review, what I read, talked about the zone, so I don't understand why we're not all on the same page.
Um, right, and so, I might, yeah, sorry.
It's Mr. Park.
Mayor and Council, so, as Matthew was explaining, the zone, as indicated within the peer review, was then reviewed by, or produced by the applicant, peer reviewed by the city. Within the protection plan and within our ordinance, we rec, we recognize the fault line, not a zone. And what the peer review states is that should we consider more of a zone than a fault line? That is something definitely that, you know, could be considered. It's something that we would see changes in code to, because we would want to modify that section of code to make that explanation. That is something that, you know, in the future, we could see. It's not what you have before us today. Also, I will point out, just remember with the plat that you see that's been modified, those are single-family structures, those don't have to comply with the 100-foot setback at all. And so, even if we were to, to follow a zone, single-family structures don't, don't have to meet that, it's everything three units and above, and commercial. And so, there's a, there's definitely a difference there in terms of how that setback would apply within the protection zone, and within the standards in which we've defined development, and what requires those setbacks, so.
Are you okay?
I guess...
Other questions?
So, a duplex is still a single-family home, is that correct?
Correct, yeah. Under, under the code, it's, we call it an attached single-family home, yeah.
Other questions?
I have one more question.
Counsel O'Doherty, go ahead.
I understand that we need housing in Laramie, but I don't understand why the Planning Commission and the plant, the City Planning Office, is requesting to put it in this spot so close to the aquifer. To me, it seems like it's urban, it's estate, that's the way it was. Why, what's the, I guess just because someone bought the property and wants to do it, and then you see this as part of the plan. But it, I'm really uncomfortable with putting this many houses so close to the aquifer.
Right. Mayor, Counsel O'Doherty, basically, within the comprehensive plan, this area is considered a developed area already because of that single-family home. I, I know we've been over this enough, but everything to the north, east, and west is considered an urban growth area. And I mean, at a point, you, you do have to consider, where are we going to build? You know, and I mean, the, the Kappa was put in place to mitigate any type of pollution that could go into our aquifer. And so, we have put forth every effort to make sure that our aquifer isn't polluted by any new development, and the developer has gone through all of these regulations. And so, it's as much as we can do to say that this is safe, and after multiple studies, be contentious, but we have found that septic systems are not safe for aquifer. And the fact that we are going to bring this into city sewer and water, we, as a city staff, we believe this is much safer.
Other questions? City Mayor, if you could.
Mayor, if I could, I just wanted to add one comment, just to, to be clear to the public, neither the Planning Commission nor city staff have identified or requested that housing be developed here. You know, the process is the owner has petitioned for annexation and would like to develop there, and as a city, we are then obliged to react to that application at the level of staff, at the level of Planning Commission, and of course, here in City Council.
Thank you. Anything else before we go to the public? Comments from the public?
Linda Boyer Garcia, 4531 Mockingbird Lane. When we talked about this before, they said there was going to be a holding pond for water. Another thing you might consider is it is, there's quite a drop between the east side and the west side. If you put a holding pond on the east side of that, by the, by the aquifer, below the aquifer, wherever you want to put it, you're going to have that overflow coming right down into that one street going west. You're going to have all those people on that, on the, on the, one to the furthest north, trying to get up, when that water is flooding that street, to get back to Bobbling, to get out.
Anyone else like to make public comments? Welcome, Buckhart.
Welcome. I'm glad you're all here, and I'm glad you're all listening attentively. I'm Kathy Buckhart, I live at 4511 Mockingbird Lane, and I heard when the gentleman from the Planning Commission was speaking, he spoke that there's supposed to be variety in what is put on an R2. I see no variety in this. I see a stack of apartment buildings, or whatever you want to call them, because it seems like an apartment if you put two people in one house, that are just stacked on top of each other. There's very little room, if you look at the, the picture that they gave us, there's very little room in between each house. There's, it just is so packed in there that I can't see that this would not have some effect on our aquifer. You know, he was saying, the, the builder was saying last time that we were here, that oh, there's going to be all kinds of pavement and stuff like that, that's going to stop anything from seeping into the aquifer. Well, when it rains or when it snows, what happens when you're, when you have pavement? It goes out, and that's going to get on the aquifer. I just think that this is way too dense for that area and for, on top of our aquifer. And I really would like to not have any poop in my soup. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the audience? Linda?
Hi, I'm back, Mayor, Council. Isn't there any way that you can put less housing on this? I mean, we've all agreed that we don't want that many housing, 46 units, that's what's going to be on there, 46, two cars for everyone, add that up, how many, very few people have two cars anymore, everybody has three, boats, motorhomes, all this is going to be out in this one little, less than five-acre plot. Why not put less houses? You can actually, according to this on Webber Lane, why don't you dump the traffic off on there, instead of it all but having to go down to Bobbling and Fairview? I don't know if any of you have drove down Fairview lately, but I did the other day, and I lost everything that was on my dash, and my, everything else just fell off totally. The fire department was out there the other day, first time in 20 years. They even were bouncing around, they had a hard time getting around out there, they had a hard time making the curves without going up over all the rest of the property to get it. Come on, let's just, if he has to build it, build us houses, go do less dance, one, one house instead of two? I mean, I don't think that that's going to make that much money. Is the money that you guys are going to make more important than all the lives that you're sticking in here if there's a fire? If there's a fire, this all goes, let's face it. It's too close together, it's going to go. So, I'm assuming that you guys are more important than the money, than the lives that you're going to save by reducing the amount of people in here? I mean, CJ got up here and says, well, the money is more important, he can walk away if he can't have what he wants. Well, I'm sorry, you know, we don't need that many, maybe Laramie needs to build, but I don't think we need to build it all in this little area. I know there's other land in Laramie, it's not like it's all gone. CJ has seven acres built, somebody's out on his place, that's pretty easy, he's in the county.
Bob?
Thank you for recognizing me once again, Bob Buckhart, 4511 Mockingbird Lane. Just out of curiosity, when would the first dollars of city revenue start to be generated when this development starts? Is it going to take five years for the buildings to be on that place? When do you actually start getting some value out of it as a city for having done the infrastructure to put city water and sewer and all that, I don't know, curb and gutter, whatever all else has to happen as part of the city? When do you start getting some return on that? As far as, is it only when there's a owner occupant of the space do you get, starting to get taxes, or is it instantaneous? Does the developer have to start paying some taxes right away? How long before you guys see any benefit to doing this? Just an odd question.
Okay, again, thank you for your comments. Back to council, any comments in the council before we vote? Roll call.
O'Doherty.
No.
Pierce.
No.
Schuster.
Yes.
Stalder.
Yes.
Weaver.
Yes.
Harrington.
Yes.
McKinney.
No.
Gabriel, absent. Shumway.
Yes.
That's five yeses, three nos, and one absent, Your Honor.
Okay, so that passes. Let's go to the next item, Counsel Schuster.
Okay. I move to approve original ordinance number 2003 on third reading, establishing R2 zonings district for an annexed property approximately six acres in size, located at 4503 Bobbling Lane, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the ordinance.
Do we have a second? Without a second, this can't go forward.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Counsel Weaver. Matt?
Mayor, Council, at the second reading of Z1901, council amended to change zoning from R3 to R2, the preliminary plat has shown that, and so, at this point, it is R2, and we covered everything within CPA 1901, the last reading. So, I'm here for any questions and comments you'd like.
Questions for our planner? Questions on the R2? Anything from the audience? Don't do any good.
Mayor, Counselor? Back again, this is my main sticking point, is how many houses we're going to put on this property? They never have a problem with annexation. Would you like to live across from something like that? Because if you would, I'm going to try and buy the land beside you, and I'm going to put something like that right beside you. It's just wrong. It's wrong to the vet, and it's wrong to us. We've been there, we're not building on him, he's building on us. There's plenty of land around Laramie. Why don't you go to the south of the high school? Why don't you go even further south? Why don't you go to West Laramie? That seems to be a real nice place to build right now. We've taken care of the roads over there and everything else. And I have another sticking point, and I know this is going to raise some eyebrows, some feathers, but I, at this point, I don't care. We talked about the revenue this is going to create. I bet our city staff, our counselors, don't think about that, the revenue lost when they go to Cheyenne, Fort Collins, Denver to shop, do they? Oh, it's just one person, it's just one pair of pants. Take that times 30,000. What kind of revenue have we lost? But we're worried about this because it doesn't come out of your pockets. Thank you.
Richard, could you give us your name again, because we have this for the record?
Richard Warren, 4512 Bobbling Lane.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments from the public? Charles, could you just, I know, could you give us your name into this?
Charles Dunlap, 4519 Mockingbird. My apology for the little outburst I just had there.
That's okay.
It just seems as though that, that the money coming into the city is all that you're interested in. You're not understanding where we're coming from. It's too late now, I understand. The whole procedure, it sounds like nobody put any legwork into this to begin with. We don't know where we're at until we get to here, and then it's nothing but confusion. My apologies if I sound unrealistic, but that, that's just the way I envision it here. As far as the annexation portion of this right now, yes, you are going to put a hardship on the entire area, whether you realize it now or not. That amount of people coming into that area, you're not looking at how many more vehicles we have, how much more saturation of contaminants from doing things to your yard, that sort of thing. It's, I don't think you're really understanding the whole big picture. Understanding aquifer is important, and again, I think the city thinks that the county people are just unrealistic in, in protecting the water supply, that untrue. Untrue, I'm sorry, the clock's not running.
You're, you're good, you've got three more minutes.
But, you know, I've sat back and listened through three meetings without saying a whole lot, and, and I'm just got a big head right now, I'm sorry, but I think you're just not realizing the big picture here, and I wish you would take just a little bit of time to consider the outcome of this meeting this evening, because this is important to the whole community out there. And down the road, I foresee things that perhaps could happen that you're not looking at. You're not understanding, it's going to reflect on us, and I guarantee you, at that time, it's going to reflect back to the city. So, that, that's all I'm going to say, because I'm getting upset again.
Thank you. Anyone else? Let me just mention this, the votes tonight have been 5-3 on each of these items. If it had been 4-4, any one of these would have failed, so obviously, this is a very important topic that we have to consider, the vote is very, very close, and so, anything else from the public before we go to the vote on this item? Yes, please come forward.
Sharon Cumbey, 1422 East Park Avenue. And, anyway, I've been at the last two meetings. First of all, I would like us to be accurate about the acreage. It is almost five, not almost six. And we keep sliding into this almost six, which misrepresents the size available for the development. Two, I think $250,000 for a duplex condominium is not affordable housing. So, I really have concerns about that, and what type of mixture and types of people will be able to afford and be there. of people will be able to afford and be there. Three, I have serious concerns about the number of automobiles and vehicles that will be in that area and the potential damage to the area and the aquifer. And four, as we continue paving north of this community, I just wonder about the potential for flooding and the runoff of the water from the north into the neighborhood south of that, where there are dirt roads, gravel roads, and it would runoff into there. And then my last point, as this traffic increases significantly, and there are already issues with the traffic on these roads that are not maintained by the city or the county, but rather fall to the responsibility of these individuals, I just think that's really short-sighted, that they are going to be responsible for maintaining those roads for this high-density population that will be using them. I just, it doesn't seem balanced to me. It just doesn't seem balanced. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Sharon, could you sign?
Yes, sir.
Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Well, I'll wait and see. Never mind. I think that's the public.
Oh, I'm back.
Welcome back.
As she said, if there's only four acres, and you're still going to allow 46...
Five point three.
Huh?
Five point three acres.
She said it wasn't quite five acres.
I said it's almost five, not almost six.
Almost five. So even at almost five, that's still less than what was talked about to begin with. And 46 homes in there, it gets less, but he's putting more homes in. That doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me for some reason. But I think you guys have already all made up your minds, because you can kind of sit back there and see it in your faces, which is really sad that we have to sit here and do all this, and it's really sad.
Mr. Warren?
Just sitting back there and listening and stuff, want to make one more comment. Seems to me that the only people that are benefiting from this are the city coffers, the developer, the realtor, the engineer, and we're left to pick up the pieces when this is all done. I just, I don't get it. Apparently, like I said to begin with, our morals and our ethics have completely gone from this country, completely. All we're worried about is the almighty dollar.
Mr. Burkhardt?
Something occurred to me is, how many years are we going to have a construction site right there? Is it going to take three years? Five years? I don't know. But that's a lot of dust and dirt and particulates all blown around and big construction equipment going up and down and beaten up on Vista and everywhere else. Has anybody thought about when the completion date is set for this and that sort of thing, which kind of ties into when revenue starts to come back into the city? So, how much outlay for how long is the infrastructure to put in the city water and sewer and roads and everything else that are going in there? So, might be worth knowing for landowners nearby to go, well, for five years, we're going to be hearing hammers on the roofs and stuff like that. Just an observation. Thank you for your time.
Yes, Mr. Homer?
Mark Homer. Just speaking as an individual citizen, it's been a lively debate, and I know there's people struggling one way or another to convince you of what they want. If you're going to have any further discussion among yourselves before voting for the third time, I think it'd be nice to hear maybe what some of your vision is for the city of Laramie in terms of how we see the city developing, in terms of low-income housing, redeveloping some of our older and crumbling neighborhoods, ensuring that we have enough housing for people in the future. It sure would be nice to hear just a little bit more from all of you before that last vote, because I think it's important to have a comprehensive vision and try to fulfill that as a community. Thanks.
Thank you. We'll get to the council. Is this something, you want to speak as the public?
No. I'm just, I'm just getting my hand up before. Yeah, if there's somebody from the public, obviously, they should speak first, and I mean that.
We'll get to the public, and then we'll come back to the council. Anyone else from the public? Counselor Weaver. Oh, go ahead. Come on up. And if you could give us your name, please.
Richard Anderson Sprecker, 4512 Mockingbird. I certainly am on board with my neighbors. Didn't have much else to add. I do think that extra thought is going to be needed regarding the traffic. I don't think you're done yet. And you're also going to have to think about what's happening with covenants, because I think that is going to be the real deal. I can't say for sure. You know, I'm not part of that parcel. It's a different set of covenants for me, but there are covenants there, and so with all your planning, be prepared for the future is not all set in stone. So, just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Last chance for the public, and then we'll come back to the council. Counselor Weaver?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This has really been quite, quite a difficult process, as it is for the city anytime a contentious land use question comes before us. I mean, those are typically the most difficult questions that we tackle and generate the most discussion and controversy. I want to, Mr. Mayor, have, and I hate to put the man on the spot, but have the developer come up to speak to some points that I'm going to ask about through you. But before we do that, I want to ask a question, Mr. Mayor, through you, to the city staff about an existing city goal that I believe we've had, and I think we have on paper, that the council's considered in the past, about bringing aquifer and aquifer-adjacent properties into the city. That is a goal that we have, is it not, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, it is.
That...
Yes.
City manager.
Mayor's correct. It has been. Counselor Weaver.
Mr. Mayor, that was my understanding, and that has been something I've used to guide part of my decision-making process throughout this, and it's been a hell of a thing. I hate to hear from the public that they think that we have already made up our minds. I may have only made up my mind on part of this. I'd like, now, Mr. Mayor, if he's willing to have the developer step forward to address a couple of points.
That's your option? Yes.
Mr. Mayor, the reason I ask the developer to do this, because in these situations, they're often the people that are in the best position to address some of these concerns. And the cities and the city council are gatekeepers in some aspects of this, and in some aspects we're not. It really comes down to, Mr. Mayor, what developers are willing to do. And I wanted to ask Mr. Zedic through you, and again, I hate to have to put it this way, but there's really no other way to address these questions, a couple of things, and if you can speak to these, Mr. Mayor, if the developer can speak to these.
It's up to him.
Right. Which is about a willingness to be flexible and creative about what you end up, what the developer ends up doing with these, with this property, whether or not the developer has some absolute commitment to any particular plan at this point, provided as long as, when the development happens, it makes business sense. Other than that, if it has to be one way or the other, or does it just need to make business sense? Whether or not the developer's willing to design and plan in a way that can protect that aquifer fault area from threats, hopefully, I'm not going too fast through here. I think these are the main points that everybody's wrestling with. And to develop this project in a way that tries to balance the concerns that you've heard here tonight, all over. There's been a range of them. So what I want, what I want to hear about is a willingness to be flexible and creative about the kind of development that goes in here. The second part of that is, if you are, then my assumption would be that it doesn't have to be one particular design or another, provided it makes business sense in the end, whether you're willing to work to protect the water resource that we're all worried about, and whether or not you're willing to work and be creative and flexible to address some of the, hopefully, most of the concerns that you've heard here tonight. We've spoken about a lot of things and some technical aspects, and we've spoken and heard about what you would and wouldn't be willing to do by way of zoning. Mr. Mayor, I think we've heard that. But what about these other points? Because these are the sticking points, that density issue, the aquifer threat. I'd like to hear about that.
All right. Yes.
Okay, well, let's, your first point of working with design is, a lot of the design plans came in because it, I mean, I have a, I have a certain dollar amount that it's going to cost me to bring city water and city sewer services into here. That's, there's no, you know, it's not going to get cheaper because I do less lots or bigger lots or, you know, it's not going to affect the cost of that. So, that turns around, and in turn, affects the cost of the lots. So, as far as protecting the Casper Rockford, I mean, it's, it's, you know, that was the first things we, we looked at when we first started looking at this land, was can we do it? Will, you know, can we abide by the rules and regulations that this body has put forth for me to do? And I, we went through those. Not everybody agrees with them, but I mean, I, I can only do what, you know, I mean, I can only do what the, what the council puts in front of me. So...
Counselor Weaver, does that answer all your concerns?
Partially. I think, I think what I heard there, and I appreciate these, this is a lot of things that I'm asking you to touch on, but it's an important and serious decision that a lot of people feel very strongly about. Yeah. From three different directions, frankly. Future development from the property owner, neighbors, and the city's goals. And frankly, my constituents' goals is reflected to me with regard to the aquifer. I'll be very straight with you. You touched on the fact that there's a dollar amount that it's going to cost to bring in infrastructure. Understood. And, and I understand that has to be part of whatever calculation that goes forward. To me, that doesn't mean that it has to be a certain type of development. And you mentioned lots, but I also heard you mention that at some point, lot size isn't really going to affect that, because there's going to be a base dollar amount to get infrastructure in there. Mr. Mayor, that's what I heard. And I, I understand that. And I also understand that people are in business, and in order to carry forward with projects, those things have to make sense, and that, that means that there's going to have to be some profit aspect to this, otherwise you wouldn't be doing it. Fine. I didn't hear you say that you are bound and determined to have it be any particular type of design, as long as it meets that bottom line for me from a business perspective. I heard you say that you're willing to abide by, and believe that you have up to this point, and I don't have any reason to not believe you, the regulations that we have in place to protect the aquifer. That's fine. What I didn't hear you address, and what I'm hoping to hear you say, is that you're willing to put in some more time and work and some creativity in here to meet your needs. And, Mr. Mayor, as a member of the council, my concerns that I have about development on the east end of town and affordable housing in Laramie. And to try to the best of your ability to address some of these concerns you've heard from your future neighbors here. And you're not bound by anything that you say in answer to that question, Mr. Mayor. My understanding, the developer isn't, but that you're coming in from a good faith perspective to try to do those three things. That's, that's what I'm looking for an answer for.
Okay.
So, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm willing to work with, with you if, if there's something that we can come up with that would, would make sense. I, I mean, I don't, I can't.
Right.
I can't read your mind. I don't know what you're thinking. I, you know, so I mean, I can't just say, yeah, I'm going to do exactly what you want me to do, because I, I can't, I mean.
Yeah.
So, you know, as far as, as far as trying to relieve the, you know, the trials and tribulations of the, of the neighborhood out there, I, I think there's a lot of false information that is, is coming from there. I mean, there's, there's, there's neighborhoods all over the, all over the town that, I mean, they're, they're not, you know, they're no more affected by traffic than, than they, they were before. There's, I mean, there's going to be traffic, but I don't, you know, I built the, the apartments over there off of Pier Street. They were, neighbors were concerned about those. We don't have hardly any traffic in and out there, and there's 30 units in that. I mean, it's, it's, yeah, I mean, it's, 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 it's going to have an impact. I just, I don't know that it's going to have the impact that, that everybody thinks it's going to have, or that they've convinced themselves that it's going to have.
All right, Mr. Mayor. I, I think what I heard was that the willingness is there. The details, of course, are always where the devil is, but to the best of our ability to give an answer to those complicated questions, and they're hypotheticals. I don't know that we can get much more than that, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, both of you. Any other questions, comments from the council? Counselor Stalder?
I'm not sure if this is a question or a comment, but I was looking at the original plat from June 24th, when it was R3 zoning, and then the plat that you just submitted, this R2 zoning. I kind of wonder if we haven't shot ourselves in the foot, because in your original plat, that section that said future development was the part over the vulnerable feature, and it also backs up against the veterinary clinic. So there were 34 lots in that one, or 36?
It was 18 duplex buildings, so there would have been, yeah. Yeah.
In the current one, there's still 46 lots, but since you've had to decrease it to R2, right, you had to spread it out so it's more on top of that vulnerable feature. Like, you put lots where previously you just had future development.
Correct. And the city staff wanted, they wanted Skyways, whatever that street is, to, to Fairview, to connect. So...
So in the first plat that was R3, you were not on top of the vulnerable feature, and now in the second plat, you are. Is that, is that how you guys see it?
Yeah. It would have been, it would have been, would have been more of a apartment complex. It would have been in that area.
Is that everything?
Yeah, I, I just think, you know, by decreasing it to R2, what you're saying is to still get your margin out of the development. Now we're on top of the area that you previously were not. Or am I misunderstanding that?
I mean, there would have still been development in that area. It just wouldn't have been, it would have been more multifamily, where this was all just duplex, twin homes.
Thank you, Mayor.
Counselor Doherty?
I'm wondering if you would consider a configuration where Warbler moves south and is, instead of having the driveways come into Bobalink, that they all come into Warbler and have a cul-de-sac. I have a picture. I drew a picture.
Well, here, I hired an architect and an engineer, and I could have...
I was thinking, because the neighbors' work is concerned about the people across the way that have a similar concentration or density, that if, if it were the backyards of people onto Bobalink and not have all of those driveways onto a dirt road...
Well, the Bobalink won't be dirt. Bobalink will, Bobalink will be paved.
Yeah, but it leads to dirt. So, what I was wondering, if you would consider a different configuration. I would be happier about the plat if it, if it didn't all load onto Bobalink.
Yeah. And I, there is a lot of consideration. Yeah, and I, there is a lot of consideration on my part as far as actually paving all of Bobalink, all the way to Grand, to try to eliminate that. And that's a huge cost on my part to take that on. It wouldn't be city streets. It wouldn't be city standards. It would be a ribbon, so, but it would eliminate that.
Counsel, we are on the item on zoning, and we'll get to the preliminary plat, which is more in the area that we're discussing right now. So let's wrap up our discussion on the zoning at this time. Did you want to make a comment regarding what has been discussed?
I apologize. I'm Colin Fawson. I'm the owner's representative engineer. Regarding your comments on driveways into Bobalink, because the development to the north is already within city limits and has a separate owner and a restriction due to this vulnerable feature, we're limited in how we can orient those lots. So such as shifting Warbler lanes so that it was between Bobalink and the other lots is probably not the ideal option to make this development functional. Does that make sense? I don't mean to step on anybody's toes with something like that, but we did put a lot of time and effort, and frankly, a lot of cost on the developer, trying to get this to a point to meet all the requirements that the city puts forward. And I understand the concerns of the residents, yet we still come into the fact that we are trying to bring an improvement to this area, not only in streets and water, but also by removing such items that might affect a vulnerable feature, such as septic systems and wells. And this comes about because as cities grow, we have to find space for people to live, and the R2 zoning, quite frankly, is what most of the city of Laramie is. Most of the city council lives in a zone that is R2 or R3. And this is how we keep our city growing and development moving forward, because frankly, the city council has hampered more development in this city than they have helped quite recently. And I think that doing anything other than an R2 zoning in this not only hampers the developer here, but it hamstrings the city from being able to grow. As a resident of Laramie, I have a concern with that, that our city council is against letting our city grow.
All right.
Apologize.
Counsel, anything else regarding the zoning? Let's do roll call.
Harrington?
Yes.
McKinney?
No.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
Pierce?
No.
Schuster?
Yes.
Stalder?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Shemway?
Yes.
That's seven yeses and two noes, Your Honor.
All right, that item passes. I think we need to take a five-minute break. Is that okay with council? We'll come back and finish up. All right, we'd like to come back into session with the city council. The next item on our agenda is item number 15. Counselor Schuster?
I move to approve the Little Valley subdivision preliminary plat based on findings of fact, conclusions of law, and subject to all staff's recommendation, recommended conditions. Excuse me.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Harrington. Matt?
Mayor, counsel, during the break, we were approached by the developer, and he wishes to postpone the preliminary plat to kind of understand possibly a better design, maybe a reconfiguration, but also talk to council members. Yeah, but I'll also let him come up and speak to why he may wish to do that.
All right.
Honorable mayor, counsel, council. I'd just like to take this time to thank you for, you know, your guys' part, and if we can postpone the preliminary plat, it sounds like maybe, you know, we might have to do a few tweaks to it and whatnot before it comes in front of you for vote.
Counselor Schuster?
Is two weeks okay, or do you need more?
I'm thinking two weeks will probably be, I've got my engineer back, so I think we can get something put together.
Okay.
I wanted to put a date specific. So I move that we postpone the approval of the Little Laramie Valley subdivision plot by two weeks to our next council meeting on the 15th of this month.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by the vice mayor, Counselor Gabriel. Vice Mayor Gabriel, discussion on the postponement. Counselor Harrington?
There's a, thank you, Mayor, there's a few items that I would be interested in including as conditions to the plat. What would be the appropriate mechanism for me to deliver those for this conversation? If there's going to be a conversation with staff, between staff and the developer, it feels beneficial to have those as part of that conversation.
Let's ask planning what would be the best procedure for us to.
I mean, council has not voted to include them, so.
What would be the best way for us to be?
Right. Mayor, counsel, basically the best way is you prepare the conditions, send them to us, and we can prepare them for the next cover letter staff report. Correct.
I hate to say this, but we're off topic. I think you should discuss with them after the meeting.
This is on the postponement, okay?
Yeah.
All right. Any other discussion on postponement?
Please, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Weaver?
Mr. Mayor, I think the comment is, was in order because if we're going to make a list of conditions or work with staff and the developer, we need more time to do it, and that's going to need to happen during that timeline. I'm supportive of this postponement.
Okay. Other comments on postponement? Matt, did you have something else to add?
Sorry, Mayor, counsel, just as a timeline for these conditions, we do need them by next Thursday, Friday, at the very latest.
That is better.
Absolutely.
Anyone else on council? Anything from the public on postponement? Any comments on the council before we vote to postpone? Roll call.
Weaver?
Yes.
Stalder?
Yes.
Schuster?
Yes.
Pierce?
Yes.
O'Doherty?
Yes.
McKinney?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Shemway?
Yes.
That's nine yeses and zero noes, Your Honor.
Okay, that completes the items on our agenda. We now go to public comments again. So anyone that would like to make public comments on non-agenda items, you're welcome to come forward. You have, as you do with public comments, three minutes. Okay, seeing none, then we'll go now to, back to the council on considerations for future council work session topics. Anyone in the council on our.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Counsel, let's go to Counselor Stalder first, and then I'll come back to you, Counselor Weaver.
Oh, no, I just wanted you to recognize.
Counselor Stalder?
I would like to have a work session, you know, on what constitutes a professional service.
Okay.
And kind of what our process is for bidding those type of things.
Good, okay.
I would second that.
Yeah, I'd be supportive of that.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Okay, just so we, for our education and to clarify, there was on our schedule a future work session, which was supposed to have been scheduled in September, and we probably had it when we talked about the UW transportation parking slander. Also, I think, I would like to suggest that we talk about cleaning up or fixing, or at least revisiting what we can do with the residential parking around the university. And particularly, I have found that there has been, in working with the task force, there has been kind of a quiet acceptance that we may be able to form a four-to-five-block donut around the university, which would be designated for residential parking, so we don't have to do all these different things, but at least have a work session on the possibility of that, so we could bring it back as an item. So if there's anyone in council that would want to.
Yes.
Okay, so we got, if we could put that on the agenda to talk about that, so we can put that to rest. Counselor Schuster?
I'd love to piggyback on that downtown parking, because they did their advisory and basically they haven't come back with the thing.
Some more parking for the downtown.
I think that I would love to see the unit that fits into a car that reads license plates and also establishes a GPS on where the car is, and that if it comes around three hours later, I'm not even going to go to the two-hour system, but they're written a parking ticket. We have people that are taking parking places downtown.
Let's do this on a work session. Okay.
Is there a second on that one?
There's a second on mine.
Second on the downtown parking.
Second.
Okay, we've got two people there.
And, Mr. Mayor, just for ourselves and staff, I think what we're talking about is maybe having a parking work session, talking about.
In general.
Yeah, the donut area that the mayor mentioned, and then maybe some strategies for downtown parking, right, did I?
Okay, all right.
It's not two work sessions unless.
We need to have them.
I think we can cover it in one.
Can I just clarify something, maybe just to be helpful to staff? Are we talking specifically about downtown parking enforcement in this work session?
Yes.
Because they brought us a plan that we all, as far as a bigger picture plan, we all said no to. So I just want to make sure we're, like, using their time well. So as long as it's, I'm in favor.
Okay, so on point, maybe we can revisit that.
Any other items for future work sessions? Counselor Pierce?
I don't have an item, but I do have a question on our work session next week.
All right.
So I think I'm hearing that our acting president, Neil Theobald, will not be here, and we have Chris Boswell.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
Also, we're inviting ASUW to come and participate on those quarterly meetings. So they'll probably follow Chris Boswell. Usually, the president will be here, but I think there is a conflict. It'd be Chris Boswell.
I mean, I do love Chris. I think he's a great guy. Believe me, I do. I say that proudly and on the record, but it sure would be great. Did we talk to their office about rescheduling?
We've rescheduled once, as they know. Go ahead.
We did just receive the email this afternoon informing us that President, Acting President Theobald would not be available, so we could have those discussions.
I mean, I think we should try. Not that.
What's the suggestion?
To try to see what the president's schedule is, to see if we could maybe postpone a couple of weeks and have him come in a couple of weeks.
Totally up to you, council, how you want to. We would be happy to make contact and try and reschedule. It's up to you guys.
Would we have a fill-in work session topic ready to do next Tuesday?
We have three items that evening. University president, ASUW, and C-SPAN, what's that called, Nancy?
Just a C-SPAN presentation.
A C-SPAN presentation, so we have three items.
It's still me with ASUW.
Let's, you know, I don't want to tell President Theobald what to do, or, you know, when he has to be before us, but let's approach him and see if he would be willing to come back at a near-future date. Let them know that ASUW is going to be here, and we would love to have a report.
And we welcome Chris.
Yes. And again, you know, whatever the president wants to do, Chris Boswell, of course, would bring a lot of information to us, so, but invite President Theobald to come as soon as possible and see what his response is. He's got a lot on his plate. But anyway, is that okay with council, for us to invite him in addition to what, is it the will of the council for us to continue, or to ask Chris Boswell to come and give us information from the president's office? Okay, all right, so that's what we'll do.
So just to clarify, we're having the work session as scheduled, but we're requesting him to come in the future.
Yes.
Thank you.
I think that's correct. Is that right? Okay. Anything else? Counselor Weaver, is that?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine.
All right.
That we need to see him twice.
Probably see Chris when President Theobald comes. All right, I don't see any other hands coming up, and so now it's time for us to.
Item 18, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I think, if we talk about upcoming meetings, I think we have.
Yeah, item 18.
Okay, item 18, which is Counselor Pierce.
Gee whiz, I forgot. I move that we adjourn to executive session regarding personnel, Wyoming Statute 16 dash four dash four oh five, lowercase a, Roman numeral X or 10.
Ooh, good, you know it.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
To executive session, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're adjourned.